Let's begin by having the candidates introduce themselves in 30 seconds. And we'll start with Jim Farrell.
Thank you. My name is Jim Farrell, and I've been on the council two terms. I'm a retired CPA and industrial accountant. My wife Judy's 40 years as a social studies teacher. She's my non-paid political advisor. But thank you for coming tonight.
Rich Gruber?
Good evening. I'm Rich Gruber. I was appointed to the council a year ago, competed with about 21 other individuals, and was named successful to the council. My background is health care and public service. I've spent about 25 years as a municipal manager, among other things, and I've been doing the health care routine for the last 12 years. 14 years. Goodness, time goes fast when you're having fun. Again, thank you for hosting, League of Women Voters, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Rich. Jens Jorgensen?
My name is Jens Jorgensen. I live on the south side of Janesville. I also work and attend college here in the city. So I'm running because we're at a very crucial moment in our great city's history. The decisions we make now will define us for years and years to come. We'll go out more on that later on in the debate. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for setting up the forum, and thank you all for coming here and showing an interest in the city.
Thank you. Steve Knox?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Knox. I also ran for the appointed position that Mr. Gruber was appointed to last spring. It really spurred me to get more involved, and I wish that more of those 22 would have come along and run this year, but it is what it is. My wife Danielle and I live on the east side of Janesville with our six wonderful children, and I work for an incredibly awesome privately-held refrigeration company in Madison, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Steve. Billy McCoy?
Billy McCoy. I live at 1326 Putnam Avenue in Janesville. I've been there approximately 28, 29 years. A couple of places in town I lived prior to that in one year, but other than that, I've raised six kids in this town. So, thank you, and thanks for inviting me. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Williams?
Evening. I'm Paul Williams. Appreciate the League of Women Voters putting this on Forward Janesville and JATV for providing this for the citizens so you can be informed to vote. I'm a lifelong resident of Janesville. I'm married to Mary. We have, I have two sons and two stepsons, lifelong resident of Janesville, and I served on the city council for eight years from 2000 to 2008. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Zimmerman?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming here. It's great to see a large crowd and everyone getting involved in local politics. My name's Spencer Zimmerman. I've always wanted to serve my community. I served in the Air Force. I was active duty from 2000 to 2004. I was actually on duty during the 9/11 terrorist attacks. I was part of a security response force, and I received a medal for my actions that day. After my time in the Air Force, I attended Edgewood College. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. I also have an associate degree from the Community College of the Air Force in information systems technology. And I'd like to, once again, thank the League of Women Voters and Forward Janesville for hosting this event. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to begin again with Jim Farrell. He gets two first starts here in a row. Jim, Janesville's demographics are changing. What is the role of city council to ensure that all Janesville residents feel included in this community?
I think it's important for us as council members to get out into the community and interact with different groups. I happen to be on the Rock County Council on Aging. One of my particular interests is people like me that are senior citizens, and I think it's important to reach out to different groups. I've volunteered at an elementary school to get an idea of our education system and learn about our younger people in our city. How can we do this? We each individually need to get out in the community, volunteer, interact with citizens, and talk to them, and that's the way we need to do it. And we need to include everybody in our city in these discussions.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
You know, one of the most important tools that we have available to us as a council is the opportunity to host various times, dates, and places neighborhood listening sessions. And that's been a successful program. In fact, I was part of one today at the Senior Center. We had 28 people come out, and I have a rule of thumb I try and follow. God gave me two ears and one mouth. I want to use them in that proportion. So it was a very, very successful listening opportunity. The council, though, has made a commitment to be in just about every neighborhood in the city over the course of a period of time, and that's a great opportunity to interact with people of all kinds, all sorts, all shapes, all sizes, and be inclusive, because that's what it's really all about. Be inclusive.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
So, to make sure that everyone feels included, I believe that city council members and just city government in general needs to be as accessible as possible. City government, I believe, is one of the most tangible forms of government because it's local, and that's the way it should remain. So I think that there's so many successful programs that Janesville's doing right now. We need to continue those programs, one of which is the neighborhood block parties that have been going on in the look west districts of the city. Those have been so successful. As I've been going out into the community and meeting with folks, time and time again, I hear that that really brings the community together, brings neighbors who maybe have seen each other in passing, waving as they're mowing the lawn, really to kind of feel that sense of community that we all should have, because we do live in a wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Farrell. I think that the council needs to get into the community. It's not about the every other, the Monday evening meetings. It's about meeting with those at the Senior Center, meeting with those on the east side, the west side. I personally was invited into the community, as far as a community member, with the committees that I'm involved in, letting the residents of the city of Janesville understand that there are committees that are out there that you can get involved in. I've had the good fortune of being on the Parks and Recs Committee, and it has brought me to another level of understanding within the city. And then, the other thing I think we need to do is, and I believe the city is starting to do a good job of this, is utilizing different forms of media to get that message out, the Facebook and Twitter. Those aha moments, we may not have known that it was out there. They do now.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
Well, I've been out knocking on doors in the past two years on different things that has occurred here within the city of Janesville. And the best thing we ever did was when we dig over City Hall's head and we got the Jackson Street Bridge built. And a lot of the people came out for the celebration at the Jackson Street Bridge from all over town. And things like this is what we really should be doing, is out knocking on doors, visiting our community people, and talking to them, because there's still a lot of people that does not show up for these meetings that the council has, and there's some of the people that I am aware of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
I've seen change to Janesville, being a lifelong resident here. I hate to admit it, but during high school, I took four years of Spanish but never really got to use it. I could use it today in my job. I can pick up bits and pieces, but I think as a city, what we really needed to do and what we've been doing is hiring people who are bilingual, especially in those situations where we have emergency personnel, such as the police and the fire department, and that's something that the city has been doing in the past and will continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
I believe that listening sessions are vital. It was nice to see that two listening sessions were held on the Milwaukee Street issue, and I think that feedback in the form of referendums also would be a welcome. To see more referendums on issues that are related to the city, not issues that are on more national or, you know, more political issues. I think it's important to get as much feedback as possible from the public. And social media is very important, too. Facebook and Twitter. I actually have taken several courses in website design, so my own campaign is very involved with social media and trying to get the word out over the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Now we're going to start with Rich this time, and we're going to speak about the diversity issue that Paul raised. The Janesville School District has a scholarship program which provides financial scholarships to ethnic minority students who agree to return to Janesville after they graduate from college and then to teach in our schools. What program would you suggest to increase the diversity of our city staff?
Excellent question. The police department, as well as the fire department, very actively go out on campus to do recruitment, and they're very specifically looking to diversify the workforce that they have. Those are outstanding programs. I'm a participant financially in the Janesville School District Scholarship Program, and while that's an excellent model, and while we're doing many great things, we haven't had the level of success that we would really like to have in hiring law enforcement and fire department individuals in particular, but across city staff. We're doing a lot of outreach, making a lot of effort, and hopefully we're going to be successful as time goes forward. Those are some examples of things that I believe the city is involved in actively and needs to continue to grow.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
Yeah, so I am so touched by the fact that that's a program that we've got, because I think that's very important to bring folks who came and went through our school systems and have been in the city their lives as they graduate high school, they go off to college, and have them come back and serve their community. That's such a good program. I think expanding that and making that more well-known is something that we can do, because those kids really are the future, and to have them come back to our city and work and live and retire and have a family is something that we really need to focus on.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
Thank you. One of the things that I believe that we need to do as a city is to work closer with the school district. We have a number of multicultural student organizations that I feel that they work really well within the district. Now we need to somehow combine that into the city, pilot this program, whether that is through that scholarship, whether that is through job credits, what have you, to bring them not only an understanding of the city government as a whole, but when they do go out to either University of Wisconsin, Rock County, or a regional campus, that they do feel the need and the urge to come back and support their community.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
I think it's a very good program, and I would like to see more of it happen also within our city government, which I did contact Police Chief Moore on the same situation for police officers, as well as when he was on WCLO. There has been several different genders of people that have came and has applied for jobs. Their test scores was not that real high, and for the black community, they would like to have an officer or two that's in their respectful race, and they said that they would be encouraged to have this. So the last I heard, Police Chief Moore was still looking into bringing some of these gentlemen back to talk to them if they haven't already been received at another police department somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
I think we just, as a city, we have to be open to our diverse culture here in Janesville. I believe that we've done that in steps as far as hiring goes. I know that we've always tried to do that and will continue to do it in the future. There are other things that we can do, of course. If we look at the different parks, we have, Janesville, as I remember growing up, we didn't have soccer fields. Now we have soccer fields because of the diversity of people that are here that don't want baseball diamonds, they don't want tennis courts, they don't want shuffleboard, and now we're doing that. But we need to work with the community as it grows and develops and see what the needs of the people that are coming to Janesville to live and work with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
I think it's important to have a well-qualified workforce and make sure that we have programs in place, educational programs, so that we have the right kind of qualified candidates filling positions for the city. In my own personal life, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration and I have an associate degree in information systems technology and high school diploma, but the thing that I've utilized the most is my commercial driver's license. I was in the Air Force for four years, and I think that we need to make sure that we have a lot of, you know, the right kind of connections with the technical colleges and make sure that those kind of careers are being pursued, too. And that takes, starting early, and, you know, having a technical degree is a very important part of the 21st century. Not everyone needs to have a four-year college degree.
Thank you, Spencer. And Jim?
I totally support diversity in our workforce. I think our police and fire departments have made some good strides as far as trying to recruit minority candidates. One of the things I've done briefly, I taught for the Literacy Connection. Many people have English-speaking issues, learning just to speak basic English, and if the city could do more to encourage that group and encourage improving people's interview skills and English skills, it would help them to become more marketable in our community. So I would like to see diversity in our city, diversity in our community, and have people that have an equal opportunity to advance in our community.
Thank you, Jim. According to our system of moving on down the line, Jens, you're up first. So the question is one from the audience. The city faces a significant deficit for 2017 because of the, a big part of it is the Janesville Fire Department expansion. Would you favor eliminating the department and going to a volunteer fire department and/or contract with a private ambulance service?
Well, I think that our fire department and all of our city workers are some of the best in the nation. I'm so proud to say that I live in Janesville because we do have world-class services that we provide to our citizens. I think that getting rid of a department like that, I don't think I would support that, because right now, I'm so proud. I am very proud to say that I feel safe in the city at all times, that I have full confidence that our fire department or police department and all of the city services are there to provide those for the citizens. And as far as a private ambulance goes, right now, I'm actually proud to say that the city is doing commercial transfers for the hospitals with our own ambulances, and that actually does turn a profit. So as far as going to a private ambulance system, I'm not quite sure how that would provide a benefit.
Thank you, Jens. Steve?
I don't know how we are for time, but I believe this answer is pretty simple. No, I do not support it.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Billy?
Well, I would, in a way, support it, because I'll tell you why. I've got sons that used to live here. One is a retired lieutenant volunteer firefighter from Cortez Fire Department in Colorado. And Dolores, my oldest boy, is a volunteer firefighter, and they work with the sheriffs and the police departments that are being paid as well. Now, yes, they do have paid captains and paid lieutenants in there as well. One just came, went from Illinois down to Cortez, which is the captain of the Cortez Police Department, I mean, Fire Department. So I would agree that there's a chance that I would definitely agree to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
And I take that the question says that the shortfall is because of the fire department, and I take exception to that. It's not because of the fire department.
Partly.
Partly. Well, it's mostly because of our lack of state shared revenue funds from the state of Wisconsin coming back to us. It's not the fire department. And when someone is my age, a few years ago, about two, I had to have a stint put in. And when I called the fire department, they were there within two minutes and had Nitro going to me, and I'm here today, and I thank the fire department, and I would never go with a volunteer fire department in this size city when you need someone to be there within three to four minutes. The men and women of the fire department do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And next is Spencer.
Well, the question started with the $800,000 budget shortfall, and I believe that fiscal responsibility is important both on a local level and a national level. If you look at the state of our national debt right now approaching $20 trillion, and, you know, we're, this year is the 240th anniversary of our nation's independence, and it took 232 years for us to accumulate about $10 trillion in debt, and now, in the last eight years, we've pretty much doubled that. And for decades, we've been passing the tab on the next generation, and I just think eventually, you know, there's going to be a day of reckoning, and we need to look at all options. I wouldn't say right now yes or no on an issue like that, but I think we do need to explore all options, and we need to look at all available options on trying to make sure that we live within our means, both locally and on a national level. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Jim?
I would not support privatization of our fire department, nor would I support a volunteer fire department. Many communities that are smaller than us, such as Milton, are struggling with having a volunteer fire department. Our fire department, per our COBOL survey we took a few years ago, our citizens value fire protection and police protection more than any other service, and I don't think lowering the level of our employees by privatizing it or going to volunteer, I'm not discrediting all volunteer firefighters, but I'm saying we need professional, trained, full-time firefighters here, and I think what we have is great, and I absolutely would not propose changing it.
Thank you, Jim. And Rich?
You know, the simple answer to that question is no, and I think it's improper to put blame on the potential deficit that we're going to be facing in the next budget cycle on the fire department. That's just an absolute mistake, because the city is bigger than just fire department, and there's a number of different causes for what the anticipated deficit will deal with, starting in the fall. Nationwide, there's been a real decline in the number of individuals who are willing to volunteer and become available for the fire service. We have that very problem in some of the smaller communities in Rock County. In fact, if you read the Gazette or listen to CLO, you'll hear that there's a lot of talk about the idea of a county-wide fire department in order to pool volunteers. The volunteers just aren't there, and that's not necessarily going to be the solution. I'm proud of our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. We'll begin the next set of questions, then with Steve. Steve, approximately 95% of all landlords in Janesville do a very good job of maintaining their rental properties. A small percentage do not, which creates unsafe and unhealthy living conditions for the tenants as well as unsightly properties for the neighborhood. What would you do to strengthen code compliance with landlords?
Thanks for that question. I had an opportunity to sit down with a landlord who's a part of the Renters Association and stated that same fact. And what they're frustrated with is that some of the state statutes that are in place are not aligned with the city ordinance. I believe it was Section 702. That's number one. We need to get those in alignment to allow city officials, when the slum lords are here, to get them out quicker. The majority of renters throughout the city are decent renters. It's those handful, and the Renters Association supports the state statute and, I believe, supports the council adopting ordinances to mirror that.
Thank you, Steve. Billy?
Couldn't say it any better than what he just said, because I talked to one just the other day, and his biggest problem is the code department, and that is the biggest problem. Somehow or another, we're going to have to really get with the council, with the code people, as well as with the city manager, and see what can be done, because that is the biggest problem, is best of everything that could come out of this thing is get a very good, very good working relationship with the few that does not want to be in compliance, and they will come in compliance if they can get a good working condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Paul?
When I was prior on the council, we passed ordinances as far as for the absentee landlords were the ones that we were having the most problems with. And one thing that we cleared up was a lot of the abandoned vehicles left on properties, which really hurt the rest of the neighborhood. You know, when you've got a car sitting there that hasn't been licensed or run for five, six years, and it's just sitting in the backyard, and it takes down the neighbor's property values. So we passed those ordinance back then. They probably need to be looked at and updated. However, I just read in the paper that the state is now passing a law, and it's pretty much targeted at Milwaukee on foreclosed homes. They're not allowing the city of Milwaukee to do anything as far as the upkeep or the maintenance of the property for a year after the foreclosure. And in a year's time, a house that is not kept up can really deteriorate and take down the rest of the neighborhood. So we need help through Madison, too, to not pass those kind of laws to tie our hands here locally.
Thank you, Paul. Spencer?
I think that, what was the question again? Could you please repeat it?
It's about creating, strengthening code compliance for landlords. Do you want the whole question?
Strengthening code compliance for landlords.
Yeah.
I think, you know, obviously, we need to create an environment that's welcoming to landlords and making sure that we're accommodating and making sure that, you know, just like on the business front, we need to make sure that we have a business-friendly environment that's going to bring new jobs and opportunity area. We need to make sure that landlords and, you know, we have a good communication between landlords and the city. So I believe that that's the kind of environment that we should have in Janesville.
Okay. Thank you. Jim?
I think we need to strengthen the codes that we have. Also, we need to make sure we have a current database of landlords. I think there's been incidences where we can't even locate where these landlords are. We need to have a really up-to-date database on that. Also, we have to remember this, is that our inspection department is limited on resources. If we want to increase inspections, then we're going to have to review our manpower in that department, because there's been suggestions of having 100% inspections. I absolutely do not agree with that, but landlords that consistently violate code violations should be cited for them or, you know, pay the consequences for them.
Thank you, Jim. Rich?
I think there's a three-step process that the city needs to go through in order to improve compliance with our codes. First and foremost, there needs to be better coordination between our fire marshal's office and the building department that does the inspections along with the fire marshal's office, much better coordination between those two particular departments. Second, if you look at the ordinances on the books today, what you'll discover is a lot of the ambiguity that leaves items subject to interpretation in various forms and fashions as the result of all of the amendments that we've made to the code throughout the years. We need to rewrite our codes in such a fashion that they're clear and they can be carefully and completely interpreted in a consistent fashion. Finally, we need to get busy and do some education with our absentee landowners and others. Education first, enforcement second, but it would be kind of like a two-pill dose that they need to take. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Jens?
All right. As a renter myself, I fully understand this issue. Something that I would like to do, I've looked at, you know, I was looking for private apartments. Something that I think that we can do is, the key thing is, we don't want to punish all of our landlords because of a few bad eggs. There are a lot of great landlords out there. I think it'd be really a great idea if we would highlight those positive landlords and make it easier for people who are looking for a place to rent and make it, kind of facilitate that connection, possibly through social media, so that that way, that people who are looking for an apartment know where to find good landlords, and those who are not positive landlords are going to start to have
not positive landlords are going to start to have a hard time finding tenants.
Thank you, Jens.